Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:30 PM. I will call the Tuesday, June 18th, 2019 meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Van Sickle.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Sutherland.
Here.
Counselor Kern.
Here.
And Counselor Dobek.
Counselors, I have a request to take item 8.5 out of order regarding Kemper Sports Management. The representatives have a long drive after this. What is your pleasure?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is by Counselor Bender to suspend the rule. Second by Counselor Sweeney. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.5, Finance Director Beto is requesting approval of the management agreement with Kemper Sports Management, Inc. for an operation and management of the city's Nama G Gulf Course for the period December 1, 2019 through November 30, 2024.
So again.
The motion is by Counselor Dobek, second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Kern.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the Finance Department, the Golf Course Committee, Mayor, everybody that put their time and effort into getting this deal done. It was going to be a tough transition. We knew that was going to happen, but it seems like everything went really smoothly. So, thank you for everybody that put in their time and effort to make this happen. And I'd also like to thank Mark and Steve for all their work that they've done over the years out there in the Maggi.
Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you. I also, on the finance side, by the way, worked on the golf committee. Extremely professional group, well-prepared, did a great presentation, so I'm happy if this passes. I'm sure we'll have a very good and long.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
We are back to item 3.1, selection of council president. You received the opinion from the city attorney as requested from council. You also received by email an opinion from the mayor.
So, counselors, how I want to move forward on this, just to keep good order. The opinion you see on your agenda relates to a motion made by Counselor Fennessy. If we wish to start discussing that, I would need him or somebody else to make that motion. Otherwise, we would have to...how did we refer this table?
I just referred it to this meeting.
Okay, otherwise, we would just proceed with the vote. Counselor Fennessy.
I move that as a one-time action by this body. We use the cutting of a deck of cards to determine the president of this council. Ace being high.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Sutherland. Now, I am going to rule this motion out of order for the reasons that I sent all of you yesterday and that I made available to the press, or maybe some copies still on the table. If you have questions about that ruling, you are free to, but I recognize that there's a great deal of division over this ruling, and Robert's rules recommends, therefore, that I turn that over to the body, who are the final authority on this decision. So, what I'm requesting is, well, I'm going to ask, is there objection to taking up a motion to consider this ruling? You will be voting whether or not this is in order. There's no...I see no objection. So, counselors, I'm going to open the floor up for discussion on...if you have questions for either myself or the city attorney, feel free to ask those, and ultimately, we will be taking a vote. A yes vote will be in favor of my ruling. A no vote will be in favor of the city attorney's opinion that this is, in fact, in order. So, if the nos prevail, then Counselor Fennessy's motion is in order. I will repeat that again and answer your questions about it after discussion. Discussion, then. Counselor Fennessy.
Wouldn't it be the other way around? Because basically, what we're doing is we're appealing your ruling, so wouldn't the affirmative mean that it's in order?
No. Yes sustains the ruling.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions or discussion? Counselor Sutherland.
Just to clarify, so he clarified ace, b, and high, right?
Yes.
I can see this, the way things have been going lately.
We're not actually on that motion yet, counselor.
Okay. Thank you.
I will then...Counselor Olson.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here and taking so much interest in this stuff. This is a pretty contentious issue that we have been struggling here with the decisions of certain people, either on the council or in the administration as a whole. I want to thank both Frog and the mayor for...Frog, for you getting the information that was asked of you to provide us, and Mayor, I read your whole memo as well as you asked me to, and I just want to thank everybody for trying to keep a level head on all of this stuff, and we'll just see where it goes from here.
Further discussion? I need the clerk, then. We're about to proceed to a vote. Terry?
Yes.
We need to take a vote.
We're just trying to clarify.
Okay, we will proceed to a roll call vote. The question, then, is whether the ruling is in order. The ruling, of course, is...I'm sorry, that the ruling is correct. The ruling is that the motion is out of order. If you agree with me that the ruling is out of order, you will vote yes. If you agree with essentially, I'm paraphrasing, Mr. Fennessy and Mr. Prell, you will vote no. The clerk, are there questions about the vote? Will the clerk please proceed to a roll call?
Counselor Bender.
Yes.
Counselor Sweeney.
No.
Counselor Fennessy.
No.
Counselor Elm.
Yes.
Counselor Ludwig.
Yes.
Counselor Kern...or Sutherland.
No.
Counselor Kern.
No.
Counselor Dobek.
No.
Counselor Olson.
No.
Counselor Van Sickle.
The motion carries 6 to 4. Motion carries 6 to 4. The motion, therefore, is in order. So, is there discussion on the motion proposed by Counselor Fennessy?
There are two people signed up, but I think they want to speak on 11. I think they want to come to amend on the resolutions.
Okay. So, Counselor Sutherland.
So, ace, b, and high, in the event of a tie, we redraw again. Is that how it will play out? Is that fair to say we can do that?
I have some thoughts for navigating us through that. If the motion to cut the cards is approved, we haven't get there yet.
Counselor Ludwig.
First of all, could you just repeat the motion so that we in the public know what we're voting on?
The motion is, for a one-time, to cut the cards to determine the council president.
Yes, I would like to state my opinion on cutting the cards. You know, my belief is that by not voting, the counselors are just obstructing the mayor's right to vote. And I would...and I personally would never vote for cutting the...taking someone's right to vote away from them and leaving it up to chance. We're...you know, we are living in the United States in a democracy, and for any of us to vote, to take someone's right to vote away from them, I just don't understand.
I'd remind the public, we cannot have outbursts during the course of the meeting. We have to maintain good order. Thank you. So, further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will take a roll call vote on the motion.
Excuse me, this is a motion to cut the cards for president. Counselor Sweeney.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy.
Yes.
Counselor Elm.
No.
Counselor Ludwig.
No.
Counselor Sutherland.
Yes.
Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Counselor Dobek.
Yes.
Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Van Sickle.
No.
Counselor Bender.
No.
The motion passes 6 to 4.
Motion carries. You had thoughts on the process.
So, sounds like everyone's in agreement. Faces are high. Aces are the card with the A on it. New deck, if you trust me on that. And I don't think we have to count them. The question earlier was...one of the questions earlier, I think it was by Counselor Sutherland, what to do in the event of a tie. I submit, you redraw. In other words, if there's a three drawn by Counselor Fennessy and a three drawn by Counselor Ludwig, we don't have a structure or a hierarchy of suits. If you're in agreement with that?
Is there opposition to the rule proposed by the city attorney? Seeing none.
I don't know if it's irony or practical to remove the jokers, but I'm going to. And I'm going to shuffle a bunch of times. I'm pretty good at shuffling. Would you like to use the table that Ms. Nelson is seated at to fan these out and draw them from, or do you have any other ideas? What's the preference? I was just going to fan them out right there in front of Shelley's.
Counselor Ludwig.
You know, I was once told never to vote against my...to vote against my integrity or principle or do an action against my integrity and principle, so I am refusing to draw a card. I will not buy, however, being obstructionist. So, Mayor Payne, would you take that privilege for me?
Yes.
I also propose that we go by alphabetical order of the nominee's last names, not counting the proxy. So, that would be F before L, if that's okay with everybody?
Yeah.
This was not a vote, so I don't know how to call it, but we will move on in the agenda. Thank you, counselors.
I'm just going to state for the record that, due to the card cut, that Counselor Fennessy was drawn as council president. Um, lost my pen. Item 4 is approval of the minutes from the June 4 regular meeting.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 5.1 is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division to amend and approve the 2019 action plan authorizing staff to submit plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Motion is by Counselor Dalbec, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion?
Well, it's a public hearing.
Well, then, the public hearing is open. This public hearing specifically relates to the resolution regarding the Community Development Division to amend and approve the action plan. Is there anybody that would like to speak in this public hearing? Is there anybody that would like to speak in this public hearing? Anybody like to speak to the resolution? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and take action on the resolution. The motion was by Counselor Dalbec, the second by Counselor Bender to approve the resolution. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 5.2 is a public hearing to consider non-renewal of applicants that were listed in Part 2 of the 2019-2020 alcohol report. You do have an amended report in front of you. They have all been cleared up except for landmark lanes, and at this time, I am recommending that you approve their license contingent upon those special assessments and personal property being paid by tomorrow. There was an oversight on the Men's Health Corporation part, and they have never been on our non-renewal list before. They're not a frequent...they're not frequently late.
This is a public hearing, too, right?
Yes.
I'll first open the public hearing. Public hearing on the non-renewal of applicants is open. Is there anybody that would like to speak in this public hearing? Is there anybody that would like to speak in this public hearing? Is there anybody that would like to speak in this public hearing? Seeing none, you need action, right?
Yes.
Who made the motion? The motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 6 is a consent agenda.
Motion to approve second.
The motion is by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.1, I am recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
Motion is by Counselor Dobek, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
I'm recommending approval of an original Class B liquor and beer license to New China, Inc., trade name China Ann, 15 Belknap Street, for the license period expiring June 30, 2020.
The motion is by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.4, I am recommending approval of an application by the Fraternal Eagle...Order of Eagles, number 80, to appoint Patricia Sloan as the agent for the remainder of the license period expiring June 30, 2020.
Motion to approve second. The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Fennessy. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Counselor Sutherland.
Yeah, did we skip item 8.2?
Oh, I'm sorry. We did.
Eight point...oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we'll conclude business on item 8.4, which has a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on 8.4, the light...the application for the Fraternal Order of the Eagles? Seeing...we already have a motion. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.2, I'm recommending approval of an original Class B liquor and beer license by Piper Hospitality Group, trade name Who's Bar and Grill, 1114 Tower Avenue, for the license period expiring June 30, 2020.
The motion is by Counselor Kern, the second by Counselor Dalbec. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.6, Fire Chief Panger is recommending approval to designate Unit 205, a 1997 Spartan Gladiator Tanker Pumper, as surplus property and to be eligible for auction to the highest bidder.
The motion is by Counselor Sutherland, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
8.7, Public Works Director Janico is recommending approval of the state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for installation of new interchange signal at the intersection of State Highway 35, Tower Avenue, and State Highway 105, Central Avenue, scheduled for the 2020 construction season.
The motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries.
9.1, Business by the Mayor. The mayor is appointing Dave Miller to the Business...Superior Business Improvement District Board of Directors. He's appointing Thomas Janicki to the Communications and Information Technology Committee and reappointing Rebecca Wilburg to the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. Motion carries. Thank you, counselors.
Does anyone have business by counselors? Okay. 11.1 is...we are now on to the amended agenda. Do you want to say something before we start with this?
Yeah, counselors, the way we're going to take up this resolution, I will, first, if it receives a motion, second, turn it over to public comment. We have a few people listed for public comment. I will let the public speak, then I will turn to counselors. I would remind you, the council has a much stricter rule of debate than the public. That doesn't mean there are no rules for public discussion here. The most foremost is that you will have three minutes, and three minutes only, to address the council. I will ask that you will keep your comments respectful, obviously no profanity or personal attacks, and then when your three minutes is up, I will ask you to step down immediately. Counselors, you will have a much higher standard in terms of personal attacks. I would encourage you to be very cautious about what you say in this resolution. It is almost by its nature a personal attack, and therefore, almost any debate risks being out of order, but we'll cover that when we move to debate by council. That said...
I'm going to read it first, because I haven't read it yet.
Okay.
Okay. 11.1 is a resolution introduced by Counselor Sutherland, calling for censure of Counselor Van Sickle for recent social media comments related to the city attorney. Do you want to take comments on that first? Okay. Kim Young.
Hold on, hold on. We need...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The motion is by Counselor...the motion to approve is by Counselor Sutherland, the second...the second is by Counselor Fennessy. Public comment, the first is Ms. Kim Young.
Kim Young, superior citizen, voter, and taxpayer. I got to say, I am very, very disappointed in my city council right now. As a voting member of this community, we did not vote you in to slander each other, to do social media attacks, to talk about each other's personal lives, and get your proponents in the community to do likewise, be dissenting, be rude, and to basically build an air of hate in our community. This is very unprofessional, and I am highly disappointed, highly. I also sit on a commission in this community, and right now, I'm thinking, how can we work with you when you cannot work with each other? You need to get it together. This community is looking to you as our leaders, and we voted you in to do a job, and we expect you to do it. Please do so.
Next on the list is Parrish Jones.
Thank you. My name is Parrish Jones. I'm an attorney in town, and I live here in town. I wanted to speak to the matter of Counselor Van Sickle's defamatory remarks concerning our city attorney Frog Prell. I practiced with Mr. Prell for 14 years, and I can say, without equivocation, he's one of the most knowledgeable municipal attorneys in the state of Wisconsin. I've had countless matters where I've had interests either aligned or divergent from his interests and that of the city, and I've always known him to be...have the utmost knowledge of its policies and the utmost regard for the reputation and best interests of the city and Wisconsin Chapter 66. The city is lucky to have Mr. Prell, and we have a number of attorneys here with us tonight who would agree with me on that point. We also have a number of attorneys who are here tonight who have had an opportunity to review Mr. Prell's opinion, and they find it well reasoned and well considered. Counselor Van Sickle's statements impugning the reputation of Mr. Prell are beyond the pale. Statements that attack the integrity and reputation of an employee of the city of Superior in good standing badly reflects on this institution. It also sends the wrong message to the city's 100-plus employees. That message being that if you disagree with Counselor Van Sickle, you can expect to be called repugnant or incompetent, and that employee runs the risk of having...not...runs the risk of not being able to defend himself or herself, fearing retaliation or further public harassment. Counselor Van Sickle, you owe Attorney Prell an apology, and you need to retract your statements, if not for your own self-preservation, but for that of the employees of the city of Superior, who can only conclude that if you don't retract your statements, they run the risk of having...drawing the same ire. Thank you.
Next is Stefan Witherspoon.
My name is Stefan Witherspoon. I'm the president of the NAACP. I am a...the former president of the Fire Police Commission. I am on the commissions of color, and I'm an activist in this community and in Duluth. We have an obligation to our community to fight for our community. You were voted in to hear the concerns and fight for our community. Slandering is not good, but on both sides. We must come together, and if we have disagreements, we pull each other aside, and we talk about it. As an African-American man in Duluth and Superior, I have dealt with my fair share of racism. I've had many death threats, but I still speak loud and I speak up because I fight for my community. This is a democracy, and it's not a dictatorship. I implore all of you to look at your community and fight for them, every single one of them. Thank you.
Next is Aaron Anderson. Is Aaron Anderson here? I don't see Aaron Anderson. Would anybody else from the public like to speak to this motion? If no one, I will turn debate over to the council. I will call on Counselor Sutherland to speak first as the maker of the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Putting together a public resolution like this was the last thing that I wanted to do. When I first was made aware of the comments Counselor Van Sickle made on Twitter, I had reached out to Mayor Payne, who brushed it off stating, "People are allowed to criticize public officials. Why is that a problem?" That right there raised a red flag to me. This is more than criticizing a public official. This is a personal attack at one of the city's employees. Attorney Frog Prell was simply doing what this council asked him to do, give his expert opinion. In fact, it was suggested of Mayor Payne at the May 21 council meeting that Attorney Prell do this research and bring us back his findings. You can disagree with those findings, but the disagreement can come rooted with civility, and that did not happen here at all. This resolution isn't meant to shame the person responsible for this attack. This resolution is us, as a body, coming together and saying that this kind of behavior is not acceptable to our city employees and to each other. As elected officials, we have a code of conduct we need to follow. Verbally attacking one of our city employees is a violation of that code. It was a couple short months ago, our city clerk sent out a code of ethics as a reminder to this body, yet here we are today. A vote in support of this resolution is a vote of support towards civility. A vote against this resolution simply condones this kind of behavior. Thank you.
Counselor Van Sickle.
I will not apologize for the legitimate criticisms of the work, not to be confused with a personal attack, but the work Attorney Prell produces, especially when it comes to his opinion about card-cutting in these chambers, which has now been thoroughly debunked. It is well within my right to speak out against substandard practices at City Hall. Prell takes home a hefty salary thanks to taxpayers. Elected officials are effectively his only oversight. I want to thank the second district for their calls and their messages over the last few days. To quote just one message yesterday, quote, "It has been too long since we have had somebody willing to fight for us. We're still with you. Thank you." Change to a city comes at a cost. I want to thank my colleagues up here who have offered their support. I know that is not always easy, and I want to recognize very deeply what is happening today. With that said, I have reached out to Counselor Sutherland with no response, so here, I will echo that same message. It is my primary interest to serve this city and continue doing the work that matters to people and improves the lives of residents. I'm asking Clerk Kulan to withdraw my resolution, however serious the content, from consideration in order to prioritize the needs of Superior. This censure... This censure will not deter my right, my responsibility, or my duty to speak out. I will not back down. I told the truth. I have no regrets and I am not sorry.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to a roll call vote. Yes is in favor of the censure as it is written. Yes is a vote to censure Counselor Van Sickel. No is a vote to reject the resolution.
We are starting with Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Elm.
No.
Counselor Ludwig.
No.
Counselor Sutherland.
Yes.
Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Counselor Dahlbeck.
Yes.
Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Van Sickel. Counselor Bender.
No.
Counselor Sweeney.
Yes.
That resolution passes six to four.
Counselors and members of the public, I want to do something I have never done before. I wanted to make it clear to you that I am vetoing this resolution, the first veto of my administration. I will read to you now the written statement that I'm required to provide to the city clerk and to you, which you'll have. The purpose to the city clerk and the Superior City Council, the purpose of Resolution R19-13440 to censure a named member of the city council is to both punish this council for political speech and to foster an environment in which the city council formally and legally opposes political speech with which it disapproves. This is a violation of the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States and contrary to the values of a representative democracy. Government must not punish political speech. The speech in question is generated by a public elected official and is directed towards the city attorney, a statutory officer of the city, and the content of the speech is criticism of the performance of his official duties. In order to adequately and fairly represent the citizens of Superior, the city must foster, must foster an environment of free debate. This resolution, if allowed to take effect, denies that freedom of public debate among its member, denies that the freedom of public debate among its members exists and does nothing to improve relationships on the city council or with the city staff. This resolution is in itself a violation of the standards of ethics and civility it seeks to uphold. This resolution would establish that the city of Superior has the power to regulate speech and punish speech with which its officers and representatives disagree. It is a violation of the core ideals of American democracy and the values of the people of Superior. I vetoed this resolution and strongly condemn those counselors who have embarrassed themselves in the city of Superior by voting for its passage. Counselor Van Sickel is not censured.
Holy God.
And is, Counselor Van Sickel, Counselor Van Sickel is not censured and remains a member in good standing of the Superior City Council.
Okay, so what happens now, the mayor has filed that and he will physically file that with me. If that will be brought back to the next council meeting, if the council wishes, two-thirds of the votes of the members of the council can overturn the veto if they so choose.
We will move on to item 12.1.
Counselor Van Sickel has withdrawn item, item 11.2. Item 12.1 is an ordinance introduced by the common council of the city of Superior, amending the traffic code, disabled parking zones by adding 1215 Lincoln.
Motion is by Counselor Kern, the second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.